Okay, we'll call the ISD 361 Board Meeting to order.
The microphones need to be turned on, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mike, if you want to do one.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting of ISD 361 to order. And before we do roll call, I will just mention that we are all in the midst of our Robert's Rules training, and so we will slowly be implementing more of the Robert's Rules. So we'll be doing a few more things more formally. Roll call, Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Dale Johnson.
Yeah.
Tony Corby.
Here.
Bruce Radling.
Here.
Tina Seater.
Here.
Roxanne Skosted Beach.
Here.
Joanne Smith.
Here.
Beth Schirrmann.
Here.
Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We're now looking at open forum, do we have anyone? I don't believe I have any forms in front of me, so we don't. And now we'll move on to the Committee on Administrative Reports. Do we have a report from Principal Tate?
I am doing that for Ms. Tate this evening. Is this Ms. West?
Yep.
Why don't you start? Lisa's gonna start us. Oh, okay, Ms. Tate couldn't be here this evening, so we're gonna transition after this.
Lisa, would you like a microphone?
Yes.
It works.
I scared everybody online.
Alright, well, Falls High School is in full session. We're happy to see all the kids back and ready to roll, a lot of excitement around here. We, just a few things to report on, I'll keep it short. As we're improving our systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcomed and supported. Sorry, I just ran up the stairs. We have established our PDIS and our teacher leadership teams. They are enthusiastic and ready to go and work hard to help with their time, their energy, and their enthusiasm to make things better for kids. We have elected two student council and school board reps. We will be getting both of them next month. We have Erin Anna Anderson and Joseph Sullivan. We have started our MTSS process here at Falls High School. Our data team is meeting weekly. And this is our guide. We are, again, always focusing on solid general core instruction. Our data team will be looking at targeted interventions and intensive interventions. And that has to do with attendance, academics, behavior, and also mental health. We are working on increasing our family and community engagement and student learning and school experiences through improved communication and collaboration. And how we have started rolling that out is a weekly Falls High School Bronco Bulletin. It's our weekly update. We want our community to know what's happening within the walls of Falls High School. And if they can't come in to see us, we are going to send pictures and information out to them. And our very first Bronco Bulletin had 250 views from all of the United States. So that tells us we may be getting some of our Bronco alumni tuning in and, you know, taking a look and seeing what's happening, so it's very exciting for us. And the kids are really enjoying it. They're running around taking pictures and saying, wow, you know, we're so proud of you, and they just love it. We are getting ready for homecoming. All these wonderful traditional events that we hold so dear are going to be happening. That will start September 30th, and it goes until October 5th. And Casey Stenberg, our wonderful tech master, here is also our student council advisor for the first year, and he's just doing a wonderful job. So, we're very pleased with him. And that is everything from Falls High School.
May I ask, the bulletins, are they filed on a separate index on the ISD 361 website?
At the moment, we have, we have them on our Facebook page, and they're also emailed out to all staff. That's something we could maybe look at embedding them on our school website. Because yes, so we can do it.
Thank you.
That's a good idea.
I'm leaving. Okay, next, now are we going to eliminate Principal Tate's presentation?
If they can pull it up, I will do it.
Oh, okay.
Lisa, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
What, Tim used to tell us like every month what the enrollment was compared to the last month. Do you have that information?
Um, I can certainly prepare that. That wasn't something that I, but I can sure do that.
Okay, it's just kinda nice to know the ups and downs.
Yeah, so I actually, I can answer that for you. One of the things I did to start the first couple months, I asked the principal not to address enrollment and retention until we get going a little bit.
Okay.
Just for the fact that I wanted to get a handle on where kids were, what access they had, but we will start bringing those numbers back. We really just wanted to highlight some of the successes and great changes that were happening, but we'll revisit that because now we have a better handle on where kids are at, who's coming in, and who has departed and where they're going.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, great question though. So I will do this the best that I can. I fortunately have the good fortune of spending the day, Ms. Tate was offsite today, so I was the Falls Elementary School principal today, and it was a bucket filler. If you need a bucket filler, go to an elementary school. So I will just go through her presentation. So right now, Falls Elementary School is working on their family picnic, which is, they actually have that at the beginning of the year. They are working on a homecoming parade, which is September 3rd, wrong date, but October 3rd, which is coming up. It's very exciting, we have some changes that are gonna happen this year. It's gonna be earlier in the day. And maybe Mr. Holt can tell you the reason behind that, why the change in the earlier timing. But one of the things that is very exciting is there's a lot of excitement around the referendum itself. So people want to participate. I've had a couple businesses within the community reach out and ask if they could have floats in the parade, so I feel that that is something to celebrate. So when you get community involved in your schools, I would say that's a great partnership that's happening.
Absolutely.
So as we look at upcoming events, we continue to navigate preschool screening, which is gonna happen in October, which is an important part to the roadmap for our littles as they get ready to venture into their first line of education. And again, that's another bucket filler, to see those littles come in and have some assessment time. But it's really a great indicator of what their needs are, even though they're developmentally at an age where they're gonna grow and learn. It helps us prepare for their success when they come into our classrooms. The district staff at Falls Elementary is well-trained in UFLY. They're gonna have their last really robust training on October 7th, which is a professional development date for our staff. We are starting to see UFLY make some really incredible gains in that sound relationship of letters. So our special education setting is also being trained in that, so they're using it at a different tier of intervention within their classrooms. So Ms. Tate is really monitoring what that looks like and the impact it's having for Tier 1 in addition to Tier 3. So when you use that language, it's an intervention model, and then it's being aligned to their special education IEPs. So special education is really piloting that right now, and we're gathering data to see how that works before we make any significant changes to IEPs. Next, we have slated our parent-teacher conferences, which are in October 9th and 15th. We're hoping to be able to provide daycare so we can get more families engaged in our school community. So that's something we've really talked about as a school district, is when we have events like this, do we have daycare available for families who don't have the luxury of maybe having somebody in their family to make sure that they can get here and be present with our educators and experience some of our presentations that are happening. So family engagement, you know, Falls Elementary and the high school are really good about looking at how we can grow our family engagement. This roadmap is gonna take some time. Post-COVID family engagement has decreased across the country, so we're really re-looking at how we can bring our families within our school walls, but also how can we push out into the community. So the FES will host two screenings of The Truth About Reading on October 9th and October 15th, which coincides with parent-teacher conferences. That's another reason we wanna offer daycare, so families have access to that, which is something I will talk more about in my presentation or Alice training coming forward. We did a sacred start at the beginning of the year. It went very well. There was a little apprehension at first, you know, people were worried about the delay in getting schools started. We have to gather some more feedback on that to see if it's something we'll look at continuously doing in the future, but overall, the feedback has been very positive. The teachers that I have directly spoke to and Ms. Tate has spoke to have really emulated that they appreciated the one-on-one time with families, so they could talk about, you know, family dynamics, the successes, the positives of their child versus maybe some of the barriers. That way, teachers were better equipped when those students came in. They knew some of that background knowledge that really helped them set them up for success in our school day, and the opening days were very successful in our kindergarten classrooms. So it was highly successful based on what I'm hearing, even though it was a shift in when schools started. The teachers overall did a phenomenal job in that scheduling. We are wrapping up. Over at Falls Elementary today, we're wrapping up that benchmark assessment. So what that is, is they're screening kids right now in math and reading and seeing where they land and what their needs are overall. Falls Elementary teams will start doing their data dives and get ready to place their intervention groups and start their intervention groups. I talked to the lead interventionist, Joni Hamilton, today, and they were really excited to finish assessments earlier than they have in the past, so they can start interventions earlier, which is really exciting for the team that they have. They have a robust intervention team over at Falls Elementary.
And Beth, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, we're gonna take turns with questions, so I was hoping we could, let's start on this end. Do you have, if we have questions about this, do you have any?
No, I don't have any.
Bruce, Dale.
How does the daycare work?
We don't have that worked out yet, but we will probably look at hiring some of our kids from our school. So looking at the Honor Society, students, student council, even possibly some of our student groups, like our cheerleading group, really will access our kids. Because we need, we have children, we have students that need volunteer hours. Otherwise, we'll look at a possible pay scale of some sort, but we do have a number of students that need volunteer. It would be onsite here, and we would also have a staff member that would help monitor that time.
Okay, Joanne, do you have any questions? Tony? Jessica?
In regards to the screening and assessments, when you say interventions, and forgive me, because I don't, I'm not a teacher.
Nope, that's okay.
What you're talking about is kids that need extra help in certain areas. And so how does that work when they're targeted for an intervention? Does that make them feel like they're different or standing out?
That's a really great question. So sometimes when we in education, right, we use language, all the acronyms that go with it. So I always, I always explain it as extra scoops. It's an extra scoop of what a student needs. So when I went to school 30 years ago, pullouts looked very different than what they look at, look like now. So students are really coming and going all day, getting pulled out for speech services, getting pulled out for special education services, getting pulled out for what you would call intervention services in reading, getting pulled out for intervention services in math. It could be a pullout for social skills with a social worker. So it's really become, how I would define it, a way of life in schools now. So families are notified that their child qualifies for an intervention service, and depending on the timeline, I don't know if it's six or eight weeks, Missy would have to answer that question, but they go into what's called a Tier 2 intervention. They would go for pullout services with Mrs. Hamilton, Mrs. McDonald, or Mrs. Koenig. And that team would work with them in a small group of students targeted in that same skill area, and they would collect data and do intervention work for approximately six weeks. Then they would reassess the student to look at their growth, and then they would determine, does that child need continued intervention work or does that child get to be released? So I always refer to it as an extra robust scoop, getting them what they need, just as we would want to get students what they need in the event they need enrichment, making sure they're challenged and have opportunities for extensions. Does that help?
It does a lot, thank you. Do you ever have a parent that says they don't want their kid pulled out for that?
I don't know about here, but in my experience, I have never had a parent deny that, just for the fact that when you explain it, when people know the why behind it, sometimes you have to clarify that it is not a special education service and/or another service, because people get worried that they're gonna miss out on general education class time, which the district has started to really look at what's called win times, what I need. So kids are coming and going to their intervention scoops. It's the easiest way, is layman's language is scoop, win time is what I need. So kids are getting enrichment, they're getting reading intervention, it could be a special education service. So we really try to, it's kind of a non-negotiable, that we're not doing core instruction during that time.
Awesome. Thank you, it helps tremendously.
Perfect.
And it's usually about 20 minutes.
Oh, okay, so quick. Okay.
Last but not least, in the presentation, startup was smooth. I was over there, they did a phenomenal job. They had some big changes to the parent pickup, and that is work in progress. There are schools across the country that are doing pickup lines now, where cars have numbers in them or names, and then the students are called out. This is a growth mindset change, because it's really hard to not be able to just pull up and grab your kid. And that's kind of the mindset we've all been trained in and how we pick our children up, but really as a, the new safety and security models across the country are really implementing change in what pickup looks like to make sure that kids are getting in cars with the people that are authorized to pick them up. So what took 45 minutes the first few days, we're down, I think she said we're down to 15 to 20 minutes, and the goal is ultimately to be down to 10 minutes or less. And with time, it will be done.
Okay, is that all?
That's it.
Okay, we'll start on this end, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Tony?
No.
Joanne?
Yeah.
Bruce? And I don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll go on to the report by Beth Ansli, Community Ed Director.
Just a couple things, one, preschool screening, Missy touched base on that. We're doing it October 7th. We sent out letters to parents of their three and four-year-old kiddos, and they have contacted Sam over at the Falls High School office. She schedules them, and so we have our staff in place, and we're looking really good for that date. We have two new classes that have never been offered here before. Guitar for hopelessly busy people and piano for those busy people. This is an online class, and it's taught a little bit differently, it's taught by chords. The gentleman who offers it, he does it for Minnesota community ads all over. And it's done online, and I've had good feedback on that. Before I booked it with him, I did reach out to other community ed members, or other community ed directors, and they all said it was such a good product, a good class, because he takes from all over Minnesota, so we don't have to worry about having, you know, 20 from here. He has 20 total through Minnesota, that's a goal, so. But the biggest thing I wanna talk about is our community block party that we had on Saturday. We have had this in the past, but we had it, we used to have it at the Kutaska parking lot, just because they had a kitchen there, they had tables, they had everything. I had spoken with Amy Martenson and Janessa Blaski. Amy's from Kutaska, and Janessa works in Cape. And I said, let's have it at Cary Park. And so I called the city, I said, we'd like to have it at the park. We usually get about 100 people that come, and the person that I talked to, Ted Broca, said, I think it's a really good idea. How many picnic tables you want, what do you do? I said, we just make garbage kind of picnic tables. We had over 200 people show up. We ran out of food. We had craft tables set up, we had bubbles, we had chalk, we had the park. It was a beautiful bay, totally unexpected to have that many people. The VFW came and cooked the hot dogs for us. So I really wanna give a thank you to the VFW for coming and to the city for helping prepare it. While I was talking to the city about having this, I also, I grew up in a neighborhood that had a park four houses away. Jessica grew up in the same neighborhood. And so I think the park is such a, it's, during the summer was such the heart of our neighborhood. That's where you met everybody, that's, you hung out there all day. So when I talked to the city about having Cary Park, I said, I would like to have programming next summer, two weeks in June, two weeks in July, two weeks in August, and have our staff go to the park and do like a two-hour thing, week, or something like that. And they have said they would love to collaborate with us and do that. So that will be our programming next summer for our littles. I'm very excited about it. And I just, the city and the VFW, thank you, of course Amy at Kutaska. She was, and Janessa, they just, it was so overwhelming, like families were sitting on blankets on the trees eating lunch. We had some veterans came and just ate lunch with us. We had older kids, I can't remember how they showed up, can't remember the picture. There was probably 10.
There was about nine.
Nine or 10 of our high schoolers that came and helped. And watching them interact with the kids, doing face painting and rock painting and, you know, setting up the yard games, because we did bring big yard games too, helping them, it's just, it was just a nice event that I think the three of us went into it thinking this was gonna be our last year. We're kinda tired, and by 1:30, we're like, okay, now we gotta bring somebody else into this, because this was such a good event, like, what are we doing next year? How, what, you know, so, thank you to everybody that helped with it. It was such a good event, and we won't be doing it again next fall.
That's great.
Tina, do you have any questions?
No, I just wanna say I heard a lot of good feedback though, from, I had nieces that went, and then obviously Abby went and helped with Cape, and now lots of good feedback.
Bruce?
Thanks, Beth.
Dale? Joanne? Tony?
Thank you.
Jessica?
I just think it's amazing, and you're right, the playgrounds, the city used to hire kids to man the playgrounds, and there was competitions every year for floats in the 4th of July Parade, and, you know, because they'd have a theme, and so every playground would do a float. We grew up at Carson Loopy, I mean, we spent our whole summers there. So I think it's a fantastic idea, huh?
I was Carrie.
Oh, yeah.
I was Carrie too. I do have one question, was there real guitars for the guitar class?
We will provide them, if somebody signs up and wants to use one of our guitars, we'll provide that to them.
Okay, so you mean they didn't use them yet?
Yeah, the class is coming next month.
Oh, okay.
It's upcoming next month.
Okay, I'm hopeful, because I know I don't need it some, so.
Yeah.
Good, thank you very much, Beth. Okay, and now our Maintenance Transportation Director, Tom Holt, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, a little bit, not much. I'm just, I wanna circle back to what Beth had mentioned about the homecoming, while we're jumping ahead into the morning. Cross-country, at the time of the set cross-country had, or we didn't know that cross-country was going in the afternoon, so we got it back going. We wanna have it in the morning at 9:30 so that they can attend, and then they can, you know, go out and get a win, hopefully. Otherwise, just my stuff, blessing's been going good. Of course, we've got our yearly hiccups and things like we usually do, but it's going pretty good. Next thing, I really, I said, you wanna, I sent some of you the pictures, I hope to share them with the rest of the board, but I had to share it with Beth right away and Missy that we got a lot of washed sand for the kids over there. And it was like a bunch of bees on honey. It made your day. You have a bad day, you wanna see kids play. They watched a big truck come in, dump it, and we leveled it out for them, and we could barely contain them, and as soon as I pulled away, they just hammered it. So that made my day, that was good. So I said, Jessica told me, I think I sent you pictures, you guys can share with everybody else there. The last thing I have is something that really hit. I mean, it's bad for us, I mean, it's good for Ronnie, but it's, we're gonna, Ronnie Long has announced that he's going to retire, he turned his letter of retirement today, so. He's been driving the bus in charter for the school in this area for 34 years. He's been driving for us for eight, eight to nine years, but he's taken, how many times has he ridden on the bus with Ronnie just, you know, I mean, football and cheerleading and, you know, so it's kinda a bitter feeling. I'm glad Ronnie's gone to relax a little bit, but I kinda hate to see him go, because he took care of every single kid, he knew everybody's name, he knew exactly where they go, and he was always, they were on the bus, he called them, and he'd make trips around to bring them back. So I'm gonna, it'll be at the end of his month, or this month will be the last time home, but I would like to have some off-the-mus scratch ones, so I think invite everybody, and I'll get ahold of everybody when we get that done, so. But that's it.
Thank you, Tom. Jessica?
No, no questions, just let us know.
Tony? Joanne? Dan? Bruce? Tina? I don't have any questions either, but thanks so much, Tom, for all that. Okay, and now, do we have a report from Ringhofer? I don't see him here.
He's at the game.
Yeah, he's out.
Oh, that's right.
I saw him at football.
Yeah, he's out working.
And Beth?
So mine will be fairly short, because we have two great presentations tonight. That will take up some of our time, but there's a few things that I just wanna briefly bring to your attention. The first is, I'm sure you know it's National School Board Member. I put up a post online, and I just wanna recognize the efforts and your commitment to education as school board members. I don't think people realize the amount of work that goes in behind the scenes of being a school district board member, from committees to meetings to reading a lot of research and paperwork and financial analysis behind the scenes in addition to taking phone calls on your personal home and family time. That's, those are just to name a few. So I just wanted to say to each of you, thank you for your commitment to ISD 361. Your hard work does not go unnoticed, and we appreciate everything you do to make ISD 361 a better place, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I want to also recognize, I want you to know that there's a renewed energy district-wide, and I don't know if you're feeling it as school board members, but from the referendum passing to how some of our athletic teams are performing, to new leadership, just the feedback that we're getting from staff, community members. I'm fielding calls, to emails about some of our new hires, to Principal West and Beth Slitinsky. She is doing an incredible job, carrying 200 people where they're, it's very exciting for me. And I think that goes back to the need that we have to really focus on reigniting that family engagement piece, and we can't do this alone. And when we start working together, great things can happen. And we also know that challenges and negative feedback come along too, and sometimes that can get the best of us. And I just really want to highlight the positive things that are happening within this district and remember to hold strong, because those negatives can be a slippery slope. We're being very intentional as building leaders, and along with Mr. Holt and Mr. Ringhofer and Ms. Slitinsky, to highlight, get the information out there from our newsletters to phone calls home, to our Facebook posts. There are great things happening district-wide, and it is important that people know what is happening. And, you know, social media is not for everyone, but we wanna be very intentional in sharing that information, because our staff are working really hard and our kids are really excited. Principal West told me today, a student, she's been decorating the halls, and a student thanked her today for doing that and recognizing some of the things that she was putting up, and for a student to provide that feedback, I think that says a lot. So I just wanna make sure we also are highlighting the hard work that our staff are putting in, and there is just an exciting energy. There's Facebook posts about staff online that are incredibly positive, and we just really appreciate that feedback. So I just wanna say thank you to everybody, it feels really good. Next, I wanna let you know that Principal Tate, she is really working hard on that reading, the Read Act. Principal West will be taking that on. Principal West is really focusing on the trades, really looking at CTE and what's gonna happen with the referendum, in addition to best instructional practices that are happening in our classrooms. So I am going to be taking on that enrollment, retention, and student attendance. And in the data that we've looked at, you know that the attendance piece is very concerning, because that is a direct correlation to how our students are performing. The Minnesota MD test scores have been shared, and that is a snapshot, and I wanna remind people, that is a snapshot. What is gonna happen next for me is we are in the process of developing our district-wide leadership team, and we are gonna be launching a And we are going to be launching a school-wide attendance campaign. So we're going to be educating our families. We're going to be educating the public. We're going to be looking at student data and really mo, and looking at a model where we're breaking down each student to see how their attendance is going and how we can embed families into that intervention work and partnership that needs to happen. Um, because if our students aren't in our seats, we can't teach them to meet their grade level benchmarks. So that is a priority for me as a district leader, but I have, um, put together a district leadership team of teachers and itinerant staff that are going to help support that work. So, um, we're very excited about that and we have our first meeting in October. Next, um, I want to let you know, you know, that I have proposed the school safety and security measures of change. And we are going to be moving to the adoption of the ALIS. Um, it's a, it's a crisis, um, plan, which is also known as an active shooter drill. Um, I don't like to use that language, but it's for intensive safety measures on campus. We are slated for our first, uh, district-wide professional development training on the twenty-third, which is next Monday. We have partnered with, um, the Duluth, or, sorry, International Falls Police Department will be training our staff. Um, the model for what that day will look like will be shared tomorrow afternoon and you will get that information. But we'll spend, um, we have decided that we're going to spend it not all together. We're going to spend it in two different sites because the sites are very different. What the elementary school is going to need will be vastly different from what high school level students will need. Obviously preschool students would move and need something different than a tenth grade student. So we're going to be breaking it up into a morning session with the elementary team and an afternoon session with the high school team. Uh, we'll have three trainers on site. Um, you are welcome to be here if you want to participate in any of those as board members. Um, so you'll get that invitation tomorrow. You just need to let me know if you will be attending because then I would have to post that. So when we look at the ALIS component, um, the, the educational side looks very different for grades pre-K versus four, five versus ten, twelve. So I will be holding a presentation, uh, informational night for the community and for families, um, at Falls High School. That is slated, I believe, for October fifteenth or seventeenth. I have to double check that. But it's already on the calendar. It's already been communicated in my newsletter to families. And that will be an opportunity for people to come and listen to the work that we are doing as a school district and also to ask questions. Um, I want to encourage families and community members to attend because the transparency in what we're doing at our schools is really important and I want people to feel really secure in the actions that we are taking as a school district. Um, we need to make this happen for ISD three sixty-one. And, um, community organizations from the International Falls Police Department to the county, to Rainy Lake Medical Center are all ALIS trained and use the ALIS framework. So that is a benefit to us as a school district because it's an automatic, um, shift that we, they would know when we say we're in an ALIS drill or ALIS, um, crisis. We automatically know what our go-to will look like. So we'll be training staff over the course of the year. Um, we'll spend a lot of time training staff, um, this year. And then we will go to refreshers after this school year. That is why you're seeing the additional PD days because I felt like it needed to be a priority for the district.
Okay, Tina?
No. I just have a question on the sharing the goods around the school. Do you plan on reaching out to Rainy Lake Gazette and doing like the education page? I know in the past they've reached out to me and said, we can't get anybody to buy it, but we'd love to showcase more in the paper.
Oh, I, nobody's contacted me, but I'm all in for that. Yeah, I can certainly reach out to, um, the Gazette for sure.
Okay.
We're still doing School Matters twice a month. Um, and I do one of them. I invite somebody else from our school district to share what, what is happening in their program.
Perfect. The other question that I have, um, I know you, you probably just answered it for me, but I just noticed Duluth used to use ALIS and now they're going to I Love You Guys.
Yes.
And I know you have that connection there. So I'm hoping like, after we get everybody trained in the future, you can kind of ask them what the differences are and why they switched.
Yeah, I can actually tell you the answer to that because I know it because I called already.
Okay, okay.
So one of the reasons is, um, you can still do refreshers. Um, the, the initial investment is very large. Um, the refresher, there's a cost, a significant cost to it. And we are, you know, they have eight thousand students. We have eight hundred. So the cost looks very different. But what they, we are also looking at the curriculum. It's called I Love You Guys and that's what they are using. And it is more like a PBIS model on general school safety. So it's more about the language, like how you use the, do you use lockdown versus soft lockdown? So I Love You Guys is more about a language curriculum where ALIS is about crisis, active shooter drills, um, things of more serious nature.
Okay.
So they still have the rights to
Refreshers and the trainings.
Updating them refreshers. Um, so I think they've scaled back because their staff is so well-trained on that. And so they're, now they're moving to what I would call a tier two is just that language of, of what does school safety look like in general.
As I see, that program is free after you get everybody, okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Does that help?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Jessica?
No.
Okay, I have a question. I know that some of us have signed up for, um, being on a committee. Uh, some of us from the board, uh, for being on safety committees and some have signed up for other committees. Is Al, this ALIS training part of having of the people that signed up for safety?
Yes. So the entire board will, and you will get a report from me, um, probably midweek. You will get a link to go through the app, the, um, online training. So all of the district staff will go through an online training that is kind of front-loading. So they, they get exposed to the language. They get exposed to a number of different things. You as board members will have the opportunity to also go through it. So when you field questions, you know the answer. This is a link that you can go through the training at home. You don't need to be on-site for that. Um, and that will come directly to you via email.
Okay, thank you.
You'll have the opportunity to join in.
Join on the twenty-third and you, you just need to look at the invite that I'll send you tomorrow afternoon and let me know if you're going to attend.
Cool, thank you.
And which session you would attend. The last thing I have is I just wanted to let you know that, um, this weekend I applied to the Minnesota Department of Education for both Falls Elementary and Falls High School, um, to become, I applied for school-wide Title One funding, school-wide. The high school has not applied for that in the past, so I've, I've, um, switched from the intervention side of Title One, the compensatory funding that directly goes solely to intervention, academic intervention. And I've, um, applied for the new, the school-wide program. So when you look at, um, the federal program that you get dollars, um, obviously through free and reduced lunch, um, what you can do through a school-wide program is you, it is really focused on the whole child. So what you have to do is if you are awarded a school, the Title One program, school-wide program, you have to go through an intensive comprehensive needs assessment. So you really look at what the true deficits are within your school district. So it could be needing more mental health. It could be academic interventions. It could be five different areas. So I will know the first week of October if we have been awarded that. But I think it would be highly beneficial, um, based on the data that I'm currently seeing on behavior, SCL, and some of the mental health components, in addition to smaller class sizes, to robust interventions. So those applications went in this weekend and let's just cross our fingers that we are
Brought it, awesome.
That's all I have.
Okay, question, question. Okay, and now we're going to move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Nothing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we're now on action items. Under the concept of improvement systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcomed and supported. Oh, let's see, yes, we do have, I forgot to take that last sentence. Okay. Uh, the first one is, uh, Action Item One A, which is the resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas School Board Policy seven oh six establishes the guidelines for the acceptance, acceptance of gifts or donations through the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute four six five point zero three states the school board can accept a gift, grant or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools ISD three six one accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations or grants received by the school district. Nicole Simpson Colson, one hundred dollars, FHS band color guard flags. Rainier Recreation Club, eleven thousand, two hundred dollars for new scoreboards at Holler Field. Wow. PCA, two pallets of paper for FHS and FES. Bronco football boosters, one thousand eighty dollars for field and lawn care. And Bronco baseball boosters, three hundred and eighteen dollars for field and lawn care. All those in favor?
We need a motion.
A motion, yeah.
We did, we did the motion.
No, we didn't.
No. Oh, we didn't? I'm sorry. Could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, and now, under One B, to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five emergency management school safety plan. May I have a motion?
All motion.
I'll second. Dale, go ahead.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under the One C, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Recommendations for Improvement, Approval of the MDE Annual Compliance Vote of Concurrent or Non-Concurrents. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. One D, Approve the Bond Issuance Timing and Planning. May I have a motion?
I'll second.
We are gonna, we're gonna stop right there. Because we have to have the presentation first.
Okay.
This is our presentation.
Okay, so help me remember, we're at this discussion part of it.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Shelby McQuaid. Hey, Matt. I'm most of you so far. And, um, I'm with Ellers and we've been your financial advisor for quite some time. Um, the last time I was up here probably was for the twenty-twenty, um, refunding, um, and then, um, up and bond at that time. And then before that, the, um, uh, updates to Bronco Stadium that you did at the twenty-seventeen referendum. So, um, you know, from, from Ellers' seat, you have a pretty, uh, supportive community. I think everything that you've all said tonight is really reflective of that. So my plan tonight is to just, um, go over sort of next steps now that the voters have given you the authority to issue bonds for those projects. Talk a little bit about what else you're going to be, um, including in those, in some additional project financing. And then the, the, uh, or the resolution to issue, uh, the bonds really just sets the stage to incorporate it into the levy that Jason will walk us through after this. Um, and then, you know, so it's a bit of an iterative approach here where we're going to just make sure we have the, um, kind of the bones in place to get it on the levy as approved by the voters, um, in August. So.
And, excuse me, I will just be recognized if anyone has questions during the time because I don't think anyone can keep all their questions as you're going along because it's pretty intense. So if you just raise your hand, I'll recognize the board to, uh, ask questions.
Perfect. Thank you for that. So, um, just a, an overall summary, the referendum itself has project costs over on the right of eighteen point one million has what you presented to, uh, the Department of Education, presented to the voter, voters. Um, but the actual authorization that the voters approved in terms of how much debt you can issue is eighteen point four three. So you're going to pay some, um, of the cost of issuance out of that and that gets you to that, um, project cost. The district has also, as part of this large-scale, um, referendum project, looked at ways to incorporate some of the, um, funding that you already have in terms of long-term facilities maintenance revenue and how you can, as you're taking on a larger project, just do a little bit of an add-on, issue bonds for that project. Tap into the amount of pay-as-you-go, that three hundred and eighty dollars per pupil. Um, take care of some of these larger projects and then you'll pay that back over time. A couple of benefits to that, um, is that you're, you know, sort of while you're in some of these larger scale projects, you can add on, um, you know, relatively efficiently. And, um, and so refinement of that, um, you know, is, is part of the whole process. But this issuance of two point five million with some of your funds on hand that you've been able to roll over each year in terms of that three hundred and eighty dollars per pupil, about five hundred thousand, um, will get you towards, um, project costs of two point nine five oh five, two five, um, for deferred maintenance projects. The issuance of that portion of the project is board-approved. So that does not require voter approval and it does not have a tax impact. That's the additional benefit of that one is because you're already levying that three hundred and eighty dollars per pupil. You're taking a portion of it, using it towards the debt payment, leaving a remainder for the district to take care of that annual stuff that comes up. So totals are listed there and that's sort of our starting point in where we're going to issue. So, um, then from that very simple, um, grid, we get into the sources and uses. So this just highlights a little bit more about how we're going to ensure that the district has eighteen point one million for project costs for the school building bonds, two point nine five for the, um, deferred maintenance and how we get to that. So just breaking down, and this is exactly what was, or fairly close to what was included in the, um, review and comment. So we just, in the review and comment document that you submitted to, um, MDE, that MDE gave you a positive review and comment on that allowed you to proceed with the election and the project. This paramount eighteen point four three, you will earn investments. So you'll have this money upfront. Once the bonds are sold, you won't start those projects until later. So you will be able to incur some, um, or, um, earn some interest. And we very, very conservatively started that number at a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Um, the underwriter is the, um, sort of the mechanism through which you, who, the investor will purchase the bonds. So they will underwrite the bonds and then they sell those on, um, the secondary market. Um, interestingly, when we were working on that twenty-seventeen election, Morgan Stanley was the underwriter for that. So you do get national attention. And at that time, we were getting odd calls from Morgan Stanley. You know, just asking a little bit more, I think there was a local investor who was going to, um, purchase a portion of that. So national attention, right? We're going to sell it competitively, um, and, uh, and get you the best, uh, best result. And so, but we're conservatively putting in an underwriters' compensation there in the legal and fiscal costs. Those were a little bit higher than what we presented before the election because now we're sort of splitting it out among the, um, LTFM portion and the school building bond. So then on the LTFM portion, and this will be one bond that's going to go for these two purposes. Uh, so you'll have a total project cost slightly over where, um, we had indicated before. And that just has to do with sort of efficiencies that we've gotten a little bit further down and, and some additional interest costs that you're getting on the LTFM. So we had pinpointed that we must have twenty-one point oh five, um, real conservative estimates at this point in the process to make sure we're issuing enough debt at this point before we get it on the levy to twenty-one point one five, one one five. So, um, we'll start to refine that as we go, but we want to start off and make sure that we, um, make sure that we get it on the levy. Make sure it's what we told the taxpayers at the time of the referendum, no higher. And that you can continue on your project planning and start to refine those. So sort of any questions as we kind of set it up?
Chair recognizes Jessica.
So to your point that you just made about being transparent to the taxpayers about what we said in the, I mean, that is of utmost importance that we are only spending what we told them we were going to spend. And these numbers are different. So I, I need to know, I need to see, how does it equal?
Yep. So, um, so for a school district or any municipality to get into an exact number prior to an election would be, um, insurmountable in terms of the costs. So Nexus Provered and they have a lot of evidence on where they're drawing from their estimates to get you a very close estimate of those projects. And so right now, we are at the point of, let's work with those estimates. We don't intend to issue the bonds till at the end of the year or early next. So we still have some flexibility. We're not We're not gonna go over with the district, with the voters authorized. And then, there's some flexibility mixed up. You see the funds on hand for the LTFM. We could enter a position in the market where the underwriter would pay a premium, meaning they want to pay you more than the face value of the bonds in order to, to take that in their inventory and sell it on the secondary market. So, that may lend itself to having additional bond proceeds for you to achieve the project. So, really, the numbers are never, ever gonna be exactly a match. They are estimates that they're starting. You promised the taxpayers and the community a certain set of projects, and this is all the framework to get there. So, where, so that number is not going to be exactly this, 18.1, because we've eliminated some of the legal and fiscal costs in that portion of the bond, moved it over just in terms of proration, and that, that just generates at this point about 60,000 more.
So, they oversell the bond? Is that the terminology that you use?
A premium, yep.
Okay.
If you receive a premium.
Then, do we have to pay that premium back?
No, that will go into your project costs.
And then, we only have to pay back what it was worth?
You will, you will only incur debt of, for that portion, 18.43.
Okay. Does that have to have like?
No, those are really great questions, and one of the things, so Shelby is here tonight to start this presentation process on what, what next steps are. And now, as we move forward, the small referendum group, we will come together now with this team, so, because those are really great questions.
Okay.
So, that's, I mean, that legally, with the voter transparency?
Yes.
That is everything that you can borrow, you cannot borrow more.
Excellent, okay.
According to school building bonds. You do have a limit, you do have authority to borrow more, right, under that LTFM within what you have, but that is matching the projects that need to be completed.
And they have the opportunity to buy the bonds at the premium, which would give us more money than we thought?
Yeah.
But then, we don't have to pay it back at the premium price?
No, you have to pay back the par amount, the face value of the bond.
Got it, thank you.
So, this schedule looks very similar to what we included in the tax, in the review and comment. You can see, your community has some, had some growth, so, all oriented from left to right, taxes payable year is a different fiscal year, right? We're planning the fiscal year '26 with our pay 25 levy, and your tax capacity value going into the election was 11.582 million in terms of tax capacity. We're not gonna assume any growth. You are getting some natural growth in your community. It's not likely because new, this Amazon big box is moving in, right? So, it's natural growth that's happening in your community. So, we just don't, we wanna recognize the fact that those, those community members are the same going forward. So, we're gonna keep it nice and level in terms of our growth assumption. The existing commitments are listed there. Your building bonds are those 2017 bonds. You have health and safety bonds outstanding as well. You are required to levy 105% of your payment, and then the MDE takes that calculation and make sure to give it back, because everybody pays the property taxes. But that's, that's the law to raise 105% and then give it back over time. So, then, we impose on your existing debt schedule, the new bond schedule, and that's how we arrived at the tax impact to the voters at the time that they voted on the election. Both questions one and questions two are now incorporated in our one debt schedule. The LTFM portion, again, is not in here because it's not an additional tax. So, this is the image of what that looks like in terms of your tax rate, keeping that nice and level over time. This was approved by voters. We're assuming a January sale that seems to match up, and with the draft schedule and the amount of funds you have available to make any payments ahead of time, and then just be reimbursed out of bond proceeds. And then, because we're just authorizing it, get it in the levy, we can make those refinements over the next couple of months. So, the financing schedule for, to move ahead with some of these deferred maintenance projects would tap into your $380 per pupil. So, the district has about $360,000. The orange bars are existing debt, which is almost paid off, and so, we're wrapping a little bit, right? Wrapping means we're taking account of what you have already as existing payments, and then we'll increase that a little in terms of what that, what that means in terms of the next one that is paid off in, to after taxes payable 20, or taxes payable 2027. So, just in conversations so far with your, with Nexus, there, you're gonna be taking care of a lot of your LTFM expenditures with this project. So, it made sense, and I know Jason's looked at this as well, to, and doing some backwards analysis, making sure that it, everything fits, to take, take a little more of that 360 in the beginning years, use it towards debt payments, and then over time, increase the amount of annual revenue, revenue that you have, and limit what goes to debt, because things are gonna come up, right? So, in years nine through 20, that would leave you about 190,000, and that's a per-pupil count, right? 360,000 total. You arrive at that based on your per, your, your number of pupils. So, that will, that will ebb and flow a little, just depending on who's in the, who's in the seats.
Chair recognizes Jessica.
Sorry. So, if I'm hearing you correctly, I just wanna make sure I'm interpreting this right. What you're saying is that because we're taking care of some of these projects upfront, some of the stuff on the long-term facilities maintenance, we're taking care of that now, everything's gonna be new. We're gonna pay more towards the debt while it's new, so that later on, when that stuff starts to age, we'll have the money put aside?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, well, you'll have the money just coming in as an annual.
Right.
An annual. So, in the first couple of years, we're leaving 91,000. If you spend 50,000, you just bank that 40 for a future year.
Got it.
So, so that, that's sort of how it's, how it's structured right now. And again, the, the plan is to get this incorporated into the levy. It will not increase it when it's in here, because that's the 380 that you're already levying, but it will affect what's in the general fund portion versus the debt portion. But what the taxpayer sees on their tax statement is voter-approved, non-voter-approved. This continues debt or otherwise to be a non-voter-approved item. The voter-approved item is the one that will have the big increase on their, on their tax statements, as they should know, because the vote was successful. So, I think, so this will get you, with the 500,000 that you've been accumulating, you know, over time, that you have on hand, you will be able to complete about 2.9 million projects, borrowing 2.5.
In addition.
In addition to the, yep. And you're very limited, right? You, you are not granted by the legislature blanket authority to fix projects, or to spend this however. It's a very narrow scope of work that can be done through board approval. So, then, here we are in the timeline, right? You, and this doesn't even recognize the fact that you have spent all of 2024 getting the bond passed, you know, bond set up, or the referendum set up and the referendum passed. But on August 13th, the voters approved the issuance of general obligation bonds. You can miss those. We're in the process of updating the schedules, updating the LTFM plan to get it on the levy. So, that was, the email was sent to the Department of Revenue, or Education. The building bond is incorporated in here, so when Jason goes through the levy, it's gonna, you know, it looks like a big increase, right? So, that's what, what the, the debt is. We're here tonight at the September 16th meeting, walking through all these pieces, making sure it gets on the levy. You'll submit your approval to issue bonds. You have to ask the Department of Education to issue the bonds. They have to give the, the okay. You have to provide notice to your taxpayers that you will be issuing these bonds, and that will go in the newspaper. So, we'll, we'll work, we'll work with administration on that, Beth will get everything to Beth on that. And then, what we tentatively have planned is to play out your December and January meetings to have, sort of, have a bit of refinement at the December meeting, right? The market is the market, and we want to make sure that we're fitting into that tax approved by the voters, and we will bring to you what's called the presell report, some of you are familiar with that, to really overlay what we think the premium is what gonna be, get a better handle on what those investment earnings will bring to the table, and then make sure we're staying in the tax impact. Then, you will actually lock in your interest rate on January 20th. We will, if, if we follow these dates. We will sell bonds competitively. It's a little bit like an eBay for bonds, where, you know, if it's a 9:30 sale, everybody has to have their best quote in by 9:30, and when we open them, we award, or you'll award to the lowest true interest cost. So, whoever can come in with the best, the best deal for the district, and over the last couple, it was Morgan Stanley was the winner, and then, most recently, Northland out of Minneapolis was the winning bidder, that is who you'd have worn to. It's just, that's included in the resolution. We will award the lowest true interest cost. And following the schedule, we would have the bond closing, or the day you would have funds available as February 6th, 2025. So, some flexibility there, if you're willing to call a special meeting, right? I, you know, I like the market the day, the week after New Year, so we, we could have some flex there, or just follow suit. January is a really good month when people are sort of reinvesting their cash. So, the purpose here was to just kind of lay everything out, make sure you're all comfortable with where we are at, where we've been, where we're going, what else I can contribute to the conversation, or what else you need me to work with back on.
Okay. More questions, Steph?
Not right now.
Tony?
No.
Bruce? I don't have any. Thank you very much. That was very informative.
So, one of the things I-
And it helps when you ask those questions to question.
And I, I appreciate that. Jess and Dale and Roxanne, you have been part of the referendum committee, and I, I've really appreciated the questions that you've asked. Coming in with 40 days left, left, has been a challenge, but I have to tell you that former superintendent Grover, in addition to the Nexus team, Rob Brown, in addition to Shelby at Ellers, and the referendum attorney, they have been instrumental in, this has been a, really a flawless process, because they've worked with me, they've kind of held my hand along the way, and, and helped keep me up to date on what needs to go where and when. So, I wanna also thank you for that commitment, but they have, it's been impeccable in the process that the district has done the last few years, so I wanna commend you on that work.
Thank you.
We have started the process of, we've had our first informational session, where a small group of us met, from administrators to our facilities director, to some of our committee members. We are gonna be looking for community representatives to sit on the planning process of moving forward with what needs to happen under the umbrella of the referendum. We did meet, and you should have access to this, I did go back and look at some of the information, the facility improvement measure. Our group did meet a couple times already post-election to talk about prioritizing what is gonna fall under the referendum, what will fall under the LTFM. That obviously can change based on need, but really adhering to what we asked of the, asked of the taxpayers, and really prioritizing what needs to be done and what funding it will fall under. So, we are looking for additional members, whether it's within the district or within the community. So, if anybody is interested in serving on this implementation plan for the referendum, they just need to reach out to me, and we'll get them on the docket to be a member of that team.
That's the one we're already on?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had lots of discussion. Is there any more discussion needed?
Yep, I would just add, in the interest of Robert's rules, this is a roll call vote for this resolution.
Okay, thank you. And so, now, we need to start our roll call. So, let's see, do we have our secretaries? Joanne, you gonna? Okay, go ahead. Okay, let's start on this end. Tina, I'll vote you on this.
Yep, I'm, yep. Good.
Yes.
Bruce, yes? I'm yes?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
All right, it's unanimous. We have approved the bond issuance, timing and planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shelby. Thanks, Shelby.
Thanks, Shelby.
And now, under 1E, we're on approving the International Fall School Building and Facilities Maintenance Bond. And could I have a motion to introduce that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on that?
So, this is, I was wrong. This is the one that's the roll.
Yeah, I was just saying, I think that was-
Well, we got an extra roll call.
Yeah.
Resolution is a-
Yep. We got an extra one.
So, the first one was related to the tax, and the second one is related to the long-term facilities maintenance?
So, the, the first motion was, was really just the discussion on the resolution.
Okay.
So, that, that one-
Timing and planning.
Yep, that was just the informational presentation.
You're approving what she presented. Yep, and now we'll move to the resolution.
Yep, so the resolution is to issue up to 18.43 million dollars in school building bonds and 2.5 billion in facilities maintenance bonds.
Okay, and now, we're going to do a roll call, so we'll start on this end. Jessica?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
And I say yes, so it's unanimous. The approval of the International Fall School Building and Facility Maintenance Bonds has been passed. Now, under 1F, to certify the proposed 24 pay 25 levy at maximum.
So, now, we will have Jason from CISO present to us, and that'll be our last presentation for the evening, and he will be joining us virtually.
Okay.
Should we make a motion?
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking. Should we make, or could I have a motion?
A motion.
A second.
Okay, and now, we'll have the presentation. And the same rule, if anybody wants to raise their hand, I'll recognize them.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
We can hear you. Can you hear us, Jason?
Casey's on mute. There you go.
We can hear you. Can you hear us, Jason?
Yes, now I can. Thank you. Good evening, all board. My name is Jason Mutsenberger. I'm serving as your business manager through a company called CISO, or the Center for Effective School Operations, and are, are happy to serve international falls and talk about the tax levy this evening. Tonight, I just wanna go through briefly some of the highlights of the tax levy and share a couple of the, the major changes that, that we're looking at this year. This is always an exciting time for school finance, folks. We are still trying to wrap up last fiscal year, '24, and we're currently working in the fiscal year '25, school year, and tonight, you are starting the budget process for fiscal year '26. And so, we're working on three different fiscal years or school years at this point, and it's always an exciting time. I, I shared two documents with you that are in the packet. The first was just a narrative executive summary, trying to highlight some of the items within the tax levy. The second was a comparative document showing your proposed tax levy for, for this year as it currently stands, comparative with last year's tax levy, highlighting some of those changes in dollar amounts, and just a real brief comment or, or quick analysis of, of the reason why that change is occurring, if there's a material change. This is the time of year where all school districts must certify a proposed levy to your home county, and we do that by September 30th of each year. School board action is required to approve this proposed levy. We tend to- We tend to bring this to you and ask you in September to approve at the maximum level, and that's a terrible language that's, that's written within state statute when we talk about taxes. What it really does is allows for corrections or changes to our tax levy between now and December, when we come back and the board approves a specific dollar amount. And the reason we do that is the Minnesota Department of Education is still working on, on final changes and corrections with the levy, and as you heard from Ellers this evening, Shelby talked about the, the, the LTFM change that is still coming, or will have not an increase in the levy, but just a shift in, in general fund and debt service. And so we still have some items that are outstanding, and by having the, the school board approve at this maximum level, it allows us to continue working with the Department of Education to make sure the levy is correct, and then when we come back in December, we'll have you approve a specific dollar amount. The levy certification this evening does impact taxes payable in calendar year two thousand twenty-five. This will be money that the district receives in fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, so again, this starts the budgeting process for next year. The comparison document not only highlights the levy items, which are in, in purple, if you have a colored document, and we also show our general education aid or our total aid numbers, and those are in orange. So if you're looking at that document, you can see the differences there. We do both of those, even though you're only tact, looking at and approving the tax levy this evening, we like to show you the aid amounts as well, because that's part of your total revenue that you'll receive as a district. Those are estimates and the calculations based largely on enrollment at this time, and so it gives you a good picture, I think, of the total revenue and what an estimated revenue budget looks like for fiscal twenty-six. The preliminary levy increase on that sheet, so if we look at the, the bottom line fifty-four, showed a forty-four percent tax increase at this point. The increase is largely due to the referendum. You'll see that within the debt levy on line forty-seven, and just as Shelby talked about tonight, that's included within this levy, and, and we may see some adjustments to the category, categorize, categorization with LTFM, but the referendum component is included within the levy. We've highlighted a few of those items that are major change, and there are really not significant changes within your levy, other than that significant debt component that is increasing due to the referendum passage. Most of the items within the levy are a result of enrollment. Enrollment is slightly declining, as we projected within the levy certification. The amount of revenue that we receive, I saw a hand up, I will pause for a second.
Can you hear me, Jason?
Yes, I can.
Okay, this is Chair Scouts, and Beth, our superintendent, just walked out, I believe, to get some printouts, because none of us have the printouts that you're referring to. So if we could just wait one second.
Or can you share?
Yeah, or could you share? Yes, that's what I was going to.
Yes, I believe I can share, let me, let me do that.
Okay, we're ready to roll, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Okay, well, let me back up a little bit then, and just highlight a couple of the items that I previously talked about. You look at row seventeen, and I see the papers coming around here.
Yes, we have them. Let's speak.
All right.
Delay.
I could be on a delay. So the, the items highlighted in purple, which are row seventeen, forty, fifty-one, and fifty-four, are the levy amounts that you are approving this evening, as we talk about them. The, the rows in orange, or row thirty-three, forty-four, and fifty-two, are the aid numbers that are also within the general education levy document that they, they put out. Again, in total, we're looking at the, the estimated revenue for international falls for fiscal year twenty-six, and that totals about fourteen point six million at the bottom of the page. This evening, we're really just talking about the tax levy, and the major component that is changing is line forty-seven, which is the debt levy. That's the item that's reflecting the passage of the referendum. So you see an increase over the previous year of about one point one million. That's the amount of principal and interest payments that are scheduled to be paid within fiscal year twenty-six. That's really the major item that is driving the large increase in the tax levy. As Shelby talked about, we are meeting the tax impact numbers that were presented prior to the referendum. Those, those are, will be reflected within the levy. I'll have more information around tax impact when we get to December, and we have the board look at approving the specific tax levy dollar amount. At that time, we'll go through and look at some of the tax impacts of different types of property at different values, just so that you can see that the changes are matching up with what we shared with the community prior to the referendum. Again, most of the line items within this document are, are product of enrollment within the district, and so as enrollment is slightly declining, we're seeing some small negative adjustments or very small changes within the levy. We receive all money for every student we, we, we serve. It may come delayed for us, as we're using estimated or projected numbers within this levy, but we always receive every dollar we're supposed to for every student we serve. Knowing that I'm on a little bit of a delay, it's, it's kind of fun to watch the board look at the sheets and look up at me. I will pause, and I'm happy to take any questions from you this evening.
Okay, I'll recognize people. I, gosh, let me see. Chair recognizes Jessica.
Hey, Jason, this is Jessica Crosby. I'm a big-picture kind of girl, and when I look at the bottom line of this, and it says levy grand total, and it says.
You have the microphone on.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, and it says forty-four point four seven percent. You see that, it kind of freaks you out a little bit when you first look at it, because you're like, that's not what we, that's not what we told the taxpayers, but if I'm reading this correctly, that is simply the increase year over year? Is that right? That has nothing to do with what we're handing back to the taxpayers?
That is correct. The increase in the levy of forty-four percent does not translate to a tax impact increase of forty-four percent.
Thank you.
Those are the, yes.
Okay, anybody else have questions for Jason? Is there any more that you have to say, Jason, or is that the end of your presentation?
That is the end. I thank you for your time, and tonight, we're just looking for approval of the tax levy at the maximum to allow us to continue working with the Minnesota Department of Education so we can finalize the levy.
Okay, is this a roll call, Beth, you know, or is this a?
I don't believe it is. Jason, do we need a roll call vote? I believe it, it's just a motion and a second.
We do not need a roll call.
Okay, we've had the motion, we've had the second, we've had discussion. I've already asked if there's any other questions, so now it's time, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
And before I ask for the motion for adjournment, I just want to say that in recognition, the, the school board recognition, I would like to say that we really should recognize how lucky we are to have such a good board here. We have people with expertise demonstrated tonight with finance. Jessica, you're doing a great job. We also have experts in terms of sports, and we all know that Tony and everyone has done a great job on the sports part. The education, we've got people here, Bruce and myself, involved in the education. Finances and grants, Joanne, Dale, parents, Tina, I just appreciate everybody so much that are, that's on this board, because we have a really nice array of expertise. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. And now with that, I'd like to have a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we're adjourned. Thank you.